Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, November 3rd, 2025, the day before election. And tonight, we have with us the Girl Scouts, and they will be leading us with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Girl Scouts, come on up here to the well, and one of you gets to start.
Stand if you want to join us. Okay, we got the flag right there. So someone just saying the first words really loud. One, two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yay!
Second.
Oh, do we do? We usually do a picture.
What are we shaking?
We take a picture. Okay, I'll scooch, I'll scooch. We'll do a photo, and then you guys don't have to stand up.
Yeah, so you're at center.
Yay, thank you for being here.
If you can see the camera, you're good. Cookies on three?
Cookies!
Great. Thank you so much for being here.
Eric, can I just say a quick word about them? So Moscow, thank you very much for the warm reception. I have to tell you, we're going to 16 different city councils this year. We've already been to 12. I've got three in Idaho this week, here, tomorrow's Coeur d'Alene, and then on Wednesdays in Sandpoint. So go, this is Go Idaho Week, but it starts with Moscow. What I just want to say, I go to a lot of different places. I don't really know if we have this many Girl Scouts who show on up. So your Girl Scouts have spirit. Yes, they do. They're amazing. The other thing is that I just want to point out, all the khaki vests you see, you have a lot of older Girl Scouts in Moscow, and that's just a credit to your community supporting them and making them feel that they really should be Girl Scouts out there. I'll just finish by just saying, we got to 7,000 total members between adults and girls. It's only the second time we've done it since 2013, so go Girl Scouts. And yes, we have a new cookie coming out next year called Explore More, and it's based on Rocky Road. And I did not leave Explore More in council chambers, but I did leave you cookies. I just want to thank you for your service, particularly the ladies up there. You're an inspiration to my girls. It is the Day of the Girl. It is the Day of the Girl on October 11th, and girls, this is for you, not for them. The reason why we do this is we want to hear your voice. You girls make a difference in the world, and we're celebrating you tonight because we want to hear your voice, because you too make the world a better place. God bless you, Moscow. Thanks for all you do.
Thanks for these thank words. Yeah, so I'd like to add this annual pilgrimage to recite the pledge and lead us all in that. Very much appreciated, and keep going on with the path you're on. It really is important. Keep going. Next up on the agenda tonight is a proclamation. This proclamation is for Veterans Day. Whereas November 11th is the anniversary of the armistice signed between the Allies and the Germans in 1918, which ended World War I after four years of conflict. And whereas President Woodrow Wilson issued the first Armistice Day proclamation in November of 1919 and set the tone for future observances by stating that, "To us in America, the reflections of Armistice Day will be filled with solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in the country's service and with gratitude for the victory, both because of the thing from which it has freed us and because of the opportunity it has given America to show her sympathy with peace, justice, and the councils of nation." And whereas the name was changed from Armistice Day to Veterans Day by an act of Congress in 1954, when then-President Eisenhower called on citizens to observe the day in honor of all who had served in America's wars throughout the years. And whereas more than 115,000 veterans of our nation's military reside in Idaho, and almost 5,000 of them live in this area. And whereas our nation is indebted to the servicemen and women who have made great sacrifices, endured long absences from loved ones, and suffered injury or death to protect our homes and families. And whereas local organizations, businesses, and the University of Idaho have committed their time and involvement toward numerous tributes and celebrations in honor of our servicemen and women. And whereas Veterans Day is an opportunity to honor our nation's veterans for their patriotism, willingness to serve, and sacrifices. Now therefore, I, Art Betke, the mayor of Moscow City, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2025, as Veterans Day in the city of Moscow, and I urge all citizens to observe Veterans Day, to participate in events within the community to honor our local veterans, to reflect upon the sacrifices made by America's military personnel, and to preserve and promote enduring peace around the world. That's the Veterans Day proclamation, and I'm happy to read that each year. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda, and this consists of relatively routine items that have been previously vetted by the either the Administrative or Public Works and Finance Committees, composed of members of the council. And...
A move that we approve.
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Haley.
Hi.
Gina.
Hi.
Drew.
Hi.
Julia.
Hi.
Sandra.
Hi.
And Bryce.
Hi.
Okay, consent agenda is passed. Onto the regular agenda. First up is mayor's appointments, of which I have none tonight. And next is public comment. For the next 15 minutes in three-minute increments, as we pause.
Y'all have a great night. Have a great night.
I thought we had you all on the hook for the whole...
That's a short meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Okay, everybody breathe easy. Switch seats if you want. It's like a partially full airplane where you can switch it around wherever you want now. Okay, for the next 15 minutes in three-minute increments, we invite members of the public to come to the podium, state your name, where you live, and then tell us what's on your mind, and it can only be discussed if it's not on tonight's agenda nor pending before Public Works and Finance or the Board of Adjustment. Anything else, fair game. So do we have any takers? Please just come up.
Carefully.
Name and where you are, and go for it.
Sierra Valentine, and where I am.
Address.
Address. 111 South Jackson. Anyways, I, or something like, yes. Anyways, I just thought, since I'm here, if we could maybe turn some spots into dog parks, that'd be really cool. Like, the place over there that has the fake grass, that would be really awesome. Or even like a section of the, you know, East City Park, or also that one little park that has nothing going on except for a partial fence, we could make it more fence.
Are we talking off-leash, or...
Yeah, just a fenced-in area.
So you know we have Mountain View Park open.
Yeah, but if you are trying to like be downtown, or like not have to walk all the way up there, I mean, not everybody has a car. Just throwing it out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Sierra.
Good enough. Thank you. Appreciate that. Who else wants to come up? Nobody else rushing that? Next up is the Moscow Farmer's Market Halloween Costume Contest Presentation. Amanda Argona.
I'm sorry, I'm, last Farmer's Market, I got a cold. Thanks for having me here this evening, Mayor Beckey, council members, and city staff. I'm just here to do a brief presentation on the Halloween Costume Contest, so if you'll allow me a little bit of leeway, we always have fun with these presentations. Moscow Farmer's Market is touted as this really wonderful community event that has really become a driver for tourism and visitors in the community, but we do like to offer things for the citizens, for the folks that actually live, work, and play here year-round, and the costume contest is one of those items. This is the sixth time we've been able to offer the costume contest. This year, we had four commission members step up to the plate, Phil Blankenship as our emcee, and then Sam Martinet and Josh Larson and Kristen Strong as our judges. And I hope I don't lose my voice. So this year, we had 46 entries, but 81 individuals, and that's because we have a few entries that are multiples, not just all single entries. So we'll get underway, and there will be, we had a few contestants who braved the weather tonight to come out also for a photo op at the end. So we had our sprout entries, always a popular category contest, and probably the most difficult for the judges because of how adorable the children are. It's not to say adults aren't adorable, too. But the best sprout went to Michael Jackson. I heard his dance moves were impeccable. And he came out tonight, so he must be out past his bedtime, I don't know. But Felix Jones is here this evening. And then best sprout group, so we have two sprout categories, individual, and then group, was the street sweeper and leaves. Ren and Reef could not make it out this evening, it was their bedtime. Then we had best junior. And then we have our adult entries. So we have individual adults who participated. Judges were judging all contestants on execution theme and creativity. So are their costumes pieced together? Are they completely store-bought? That sort of thing. And I think presentation went a long way this year with the judges. And Bad Bunny took that, Sierra Valentine. Pair duo entries. So these are kind of our all-ages categories, and always, always a good time. And then two friends on a roller coaster took it. They were unable to attend this evening. And then lastly, our group entries. It was a really good time with this one. I am partial to one of those photos, if you can take a guess. And best group was our space entry.
Nice.
As always, every year, we try and improve and get better with these types of events, especially when they're for our local citizens. And so we always look to our vendors first to offer any services, prizes, trophies. And we were really excited this year to work again with Danielle, with Coulter &amp; Co Photography and Events. And then this year's trophies, we were able to work with light designs for those adorable little pumpkin trophies. And we had over $800 donated generously by our vendors. So when they sign up for the Farmer's Market, we ask them what kind of events are interested in participating and donating their products or their services to. And so we have a targeted list that we work with, and folks step up to the plate. And this is all those local vendor contributors, including Patty's Kitchen, CJ Crochet, Blue Sky Mondays, Paradise Creek Pottery, La Patisserie, Canyon View Farmstead, Tyler Horton Photography, Wingover Farm, The Glamorous Cicada, Hasty Fawn, Bitterroot Botanicals of Idaho, Oak and Ew, Flower Power Bakery, Allison Meyer Photography, Humble Burger, Tailor Made Kitchen, Clearwater Roasting Company, Smoot's Flavor Farm, and Abundance of Joy. Happy to answer any questions before we move into this lovely presentation of trophies and a photo op with our mayor.
Nice job.
Yeah.
Great. Oh, and next year's market will end on Halloween proper. Very important to note. I would at this time invite the contestants that are in the audience for a photo op with the mayor, and we'll hand you your trophies.
So cute. Nice. Nice. Ooh, blasting off, I love it. Thriller. Oh, so good. So good.
Michael Jackson.
Good job.
This is the best. Wow!
So cute.
Look at them looking at each other like, whoa.
So he was going to gather around the mayor.
Your spaceship.
The mayor wear the spaceship? Oh, no.
Nice work.
Nice work.
Oh, oh, there we go. Oh, cute.
For us, too.
Nice job. Congratulations. Good job.
Good job, spaceman.
Good job. Yeah.
This is always a favorite event every single year. It's a hoot.
We got a good twofer tonight with the Girl Scouts and the costume contest.
It's way more fun than usual.
Okay, you know, we, we could also put a sign over this way to the magnificent egress, because people seem to be headed that way.
Yeah, they do.
Thanks to P.T. Barnum. Oh, okay.
I need some sparkly light-up shoes.
I can see you rocking those, actually.
Me, too. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a Citizens Commission Report, the Moscow Tree Commission, starring David Schott and Ellis Seep. Welcome back, guys. It's been a whole year.
Mayor Beckey, members of council, thank you for having us. It has been a year. So Ellis is going to be presenting our Tree Commission Annual Report. Ellis has been the chair for quite some time. He's been a real treat to work with. So he does a great job running the commission. And so Ellis and his family have lived here in Moscow since 2011, after Ellis graduated from law school. Ellis is a estate planning attorney and an avid outdoorsman. I get a lot of great stories. I'm sure I was there, too, who inherited a love and nature from his father, a self-proclaimed tree hugger. Ellis and his wife Hope have four kids, love living in Moscow, and spend as much time in Idaho wilderness as they possibly can. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ellis.
Welcome, Ellis.
I know, I'm so excited.
Gina can't control herself right now.
What a hard time.
Mayor Beckey, city council, thank you guys so much. Thank you, David. I am very happy to present the annual report. I'll make sure I can use the technology. All right, yeah, so first, I'd like to introduce you guys to the commission. We actually have the entire commissions here, so when I, when I call your name, please raise your hand, so everyone can give you a round of applause. The, the real treat in the commission is working with these people. I'm always amazed that they want me to be the chair, given I'm the least experienced person, and least knowledgeable person of everyone there. They do a lot, they get a lot done, and I'm just very thankful to be able to work with them. Yep, so there's me, I'm the chair. David Rock is my amazing vice chair, also known as Mr. Tree. We've got Pam Brunsfeld, our secretary, Mary Jo as well. We've got Mark Heinlein, who is joining us. He's, he's joining us on Tuesday. Gene, Gene's right there. And Ben Kuhn, who unfortunately, we don't have a picture for him, but he's right over there, so you can see what he looks like. So, right, so that's, that's the members of the commission. Yes, Gina.
It's the only selfie I have. Only one, sorry, guys.
Yeah. And then David Schott as well, who has been also a delight to work with. Fantastic, SIAF liaison. All right, so I'll first go over our mission statement, as, as you guys I'm sure have heard plenty of times. The mission or purpose of the Moscow Tree Commission is to plan, establish, and help conduct a comprehensive community forestry program for the city of Moscow by ensuring safe, healthy trees. Community forestry program will enhance the quality of life for all that live and work and visit the city of Moscow. I think everyone understands the quality of life. Currently, right now, where we live, all of the maples are yellow, and it's, it's very beautiful, so that alone. Our structures and duties, the commission is responsible for providing advice to the mayor and council as to the preservation, protection, and management of the community forestry. We also have a quasi-judicial role. The commission is charged to hear appeals from license, certification, or permit applicants who are aggrieved of some action taken pursuant to the procedure set forth in the Moscow City Code. I myself have never seen this, and it doesn't, thankfully, it doesn't come up that often. Also, we are responsible for developing and implementing educational materials and programs addressing community forestry issues. So that's our structures, that's our duties, those are the things that we do in our day-to-day operations in the commission. So talk a little bit about the community forest. I know that I promised last year that we would update the green infrastructure definition, but essentially, it is the infrastructure that's provided by our community forest. That's basically what it is. And that infrastructure provides all of the benefits that you see listed up there: public health, traffic calming, reduction of energy, water conservation, storm water mitigation, enhanced public space, urban wildlife. I used to live over on Seventh Street, and I routinely, Seventh and Jefferson, basically, I routinely see whitetail deer in the, in the lot across from us. We also had a skunk living underneath our house at that place as well. But enhanced to business, increased property values, and carbon sequestration. So anyway, those are all fairly self-explanatory, and I, I think most people would agree with all the benefits that are provided by the, the green infrastructure, the community forest that we have here in Moscow. All right, so I'll talk a little bit about what we did this year in 2025. As I mentioned before, I'm always amazed at how much the Tree Commission is able to get done. We had our Arbor Day celebration at Burman Creekside Park with Paradise Creek Regional High School, and also the Rotary Club as well. We had the annual seedling giveaway in the spring. This year, we had Bristol Cone Pine, Lewis Seringa, and Northern Catalpa. Also, for the 32nd year running, we got the Tree City USA, and for the 24th year, we got the Growth Award. As you see some pictures up there of us bagging seedlings and also planting the trees at Burman Creekside Park. Also, we did two Farmer's Market. We did the one in the spring, and we did one in the fall. In the fall, we also gave away seedlings. We were promoting planting trees in the fall, since it's a great time to plant trees. Part of that, as you might have seen in the September Utility Billing Newsletter, we talked about that. We gave away Pondrosa Pine, Radoja Dogwood, and Burr English Oak, and they were, they're flying off the table. Then, we selected for 2026 the Arbor Day planting, the Arbor Day seedlings. So what you can look forward to getting at the spring Farmer's Market next year is Ocean Spray, Service Berry, Red Oak, and Catalpa. We're also working with the University of Idaho to have a kind of joint Arbor Day celebration with the University of Idaho. So that's going along well, and we're excited about that. The Utility Billing Newsletter articles, we had proper care of newly planted trees. We had the supplemental water for mature trees. And then also, we had the fall is a great time to plant trees. So we had three articles this year in that as well. Another thing I want to, yeah, mention again is, in 2023, we put together the Heritage Tree Program, and I want to especially thank Pam and Mary Jo, and anyone am I missing who was helping with that? Anyway, they did a lot of work in putting together this Heritage Tree Program that we did in 2023, and I just wanted to highlight that again. That is a program where you can nominate a heritage tree. If you go to the city website, you can see the different ways to nominate the trees. You can't really read them, and I can't read them either on here, but you can go, you can see the steps that you need to take to nominate those trees. So historical value, it's an interesting variety that we don't have. There's a, there's a redwood.
Sequoia.
Sequoia, is it sequoia, right? Yeah. So we, there's a sequoia here in town. So anyway, I think that's really cool. It's over on Hay Street, it's pretty, there's two.
There's one on the campus, too.
Someone should nominate that.
Maybe I should nominate that one.
Anyway, so it's a great program, you can go look at trees, there's a guy, you can go look at them, you can see all of them from the public right away. So anyway, just wanted to bring that back up, if anyone has any nominations they want to make. But that's been a program that's been very fun and very interesting, so. On the horizon, we are considering a tree service certification, test questions, these would be based on the ISA Certified Arbor Study Guide. We'd be testing on, it'd be testing on general knowledge, laws, safety. Also, contractor tree pruning education as well, because those are two things that we're working on developing right now. Also, on December, which?
First Saturday.
First Saturday in December, yeah. Which I don't remember off the top of my head.
The 6th.
The 6th, okay, yeah. There is a tree cookie workshop, so you can see some pictures. Basically, it's a bring your kids down, bring yourself down as well, you don't have to just come without your kids. And you can make ornaments, so that has been a lot of fun over the years. So that'll be at the 1912 Center. And then we've also been doing some other visioning based on the Tree City USA Growth Awards categories, trying to maybe delve into some more categories and bring some more things up. So those are the things we have on the horizon. Any questions do you guys have?
Broadly speaking, I think we're pretty well informed on a bi-weekly basis by Gina.
Even if we don't have a meeting, I make stuff up, too.
The only thing I was going to add, because we are, we were considering planting a tree in our front yard this fall, and we decided to wait until spring, but we, the, I'm glad that we have not yet had before council the, like, the permit or appeal process have to come to council if there's applicants who don't like the outcome, but I, this is my, granted, half the audience is the Tree Commission who already knows there's a permitting process in place, but I did not know there was a permit process, or one of the tools that we have at the city is to file when you plant a tree, so that it can be, we're making sure that we're not planting it in a place that will affect our existing city infrastructure. And it was, it's been a very fun and informative process, so this, I appreciate learning about that because I didn't know prior to being on council, so I appreciate the permit process, and I hope people use it, and it's not meant to be red tape, it really is just meant to help us develop our existing inventory, and also make sure that we're not planting a really big, hungry tree root system right over the top of crucial infrastructure, so.
Dave, would you like to embellish?
Thank you, Mayor Beckey. Yeah, we do have a permitting system, so permit to remove, if you're looking to remove a tree, this is just in the public right-of-way. That also generally includes a replacement requirement if there's room along the front edge of the property, and then we have a permit to plant. And so our, one of my roles as a community forestry administrator is to make sure we're putting the right tree in the right places, taking into account utility lines, line of sight, the sight triangle for safe... it was, it's been a very fun and informative process. So this, I appreciate learning about that because I didn't know prior to being on council. So I appreciate the permit process and I hope people um use it and it's not meant to be red tape. It really is just meant to help us uh, develop our existing inventory and also make sure that we're not planting a really big hungry tree root system right over the top of um crucial infrastructure. So.
Yeah.
Dave, would you like to uh embellish?
Thank you, Mayor Bedekey. Um, yeah, we do have a permitting system. So uh permit to remove, if you're looking to remove a tree, uh, this is just in the public right of way. Um, that also generally includes a replacement requirement if there's room along the frontage of the property. And then we have a permit to plant. And so our, one of my roles as a community forestry administrator is to make sure we're putting the right tree in the right places. Taking into account utility lines, uh, line of sight, the site triangle for safety for, and then backing in and out of your driveway, a ten-foot minimum off the drive apron. So I'm happy to walk anybody through that process. Uh, all those permits are on our website. My contact information's on there as well, so.
Gina.
Um, two things. I can attest to Dave being lovely to work with. We've had to remove a couple of, some dying aspens in our front yard and he's been just very, very lenient and very um patient with us. Um, I wanna bring up the, the, one of the statements on the last slide was something about uh visioning. You know, we keep hearing all of this about tree this and we're gonna plant more trees and it's easy to think that the trees commission is simple supporting trees, right? But what is interesting to me is how you guys are pushing yourself. We are supporting the Tree City Initiative that the city does by trying to push our goals, their goals, they're trying to push their goals. I just get to play along. So that they can not only um continue what the good works are doing, but also support what the city is doing. And to me, this is just such a, it's a painful process. It's very hard, you guys, but it is really worth it. And I, I really appreciate your willingness to do all of this fun stuff for free, kids. It's, it's great fun.
Yeah, one question, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Thanks for coming in tonight. Uh, you'd mentioned that there was the joint celebration potentially in the works with, with the University for Arbor Day. And I'm curious, do you, can you expand a little bit on what your relationship is with the U of I, especially like concerning maybe the arboretums? I'm curious if you have any plans or any ideas maybe on the horizon to utilize kind of those, those specially designated areas that, that could be beneficial both for the on-campus population, but also the community at large in relation to uh what you all do.
Yeah, I mean, it, we are kind of still in the nascent stages of that right now. Uh, I don't think the plan is necessarily to be in the arboretum maybe this year. Um, you know, I mean, the university does a great job with that. Uh, we're still kind of exploring like some good locations, uh, to put it. We're, we, we look at places where it would make a lot of sense to plant new trees, places that need it, things like that. So that's kind of what we're doing. And I don't know if you have anything to add.
Oh, uh, yes, thank you, Ellis. Um, yeah, so each Arbor Day, we try to partner with somebody around town and we try to involve kids. And so, and many years past, we've been partnering with elementary schools. Um, last year, we did the regional high school. Uh, this year, we thought we'd explore our horizons a little bit and try to partner with the University of Idaho. A site to be determined, um, but we wanna make sure we're planting trees in a site. We don't wanna just plant trees. I'm gonna promote this one more time. We wanna grow trees, you know, maintain over long term and really grow trees rather than just planting them. So uh, we're excited to partner with the university. We've had some preliminary discussions with them and I think it's moving forward, so.
Thanks.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
What do you see for the future of Moscow's urban forest? I know there's a lot of questions about downtown trees and street trees and things like that. What, um, so if you look out on that semi-long-term horizon of like five years, what do you?
Like five years?
Yeah, we'll say five. I mean, I know trees, it's really more like twenty, but.
Yeah, I mean, part of what we are tasked with doing involves everything. So I mean, like downtown is part of that as well. And uh, like, we've been doing some research on that particular question, like what would make sense, what's a good, you know, what are the good varieties to plant there, things like that. Um, yeah, I mean, there's already, I mean, I think, you know, you, where we live in town, there's already a very beautiful uh urban forest we have now. Uh, part of what it is will be simply just maintaining that as well in addition to like what David just said about, you know, U of I, you're looking for strategic places to plant them. There's areas where there might be gaps. And then there's also gonna be management as well, so just taking care of what you have. Part of that is also accomplished through education, which is something we've been always working on so that people are educated in how to take care of their own trees. You know, what you have planted in your own yard is, that's, you know, that's kind of your business. So then equipping homeowners to have, you know, citizens here to have the knowledge to take care of what they have is also part of what we're doing. I think we'll have a positive impact on that.
Okay, one thing about planting uh urban trees is uh, there's been feedback from citizens. They've appreciated the trees that have been planted along the frontage of Sixth Street in front of the Six and Jackson property. So even though they aren't huge yet, people have noticed and said that, yeah, this makes a difference. So it really does. So thanks for the work that you guys do in keeping us on the right track with trees. Much appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good to see you, tree people.
Okay, next up is a request for exception from the Moscow City Code Section ten dash three dash three to permit an indoor airsoft facility. Bill Belknap.
Feel like I some hand sanitizer thereafter, Amanda.
I'm telling you.
Spray it down.
Bye, David.
Just teasing, Amanda, just teasing. All right, provide a little bit of background on this subject. So Moscow City Code Section ten dash three dash three prohibits the discharge of firearms or weapons of any kind uh within the city of Moscow. Uh, the prohibition includes a list of what, you know, firearms or weapons include, and that does include handguns, rifles, pellet guns, air rifles, BB guns, slingshots, flippers, bows and arrows, and other projectiles. Um, I think it's clear that section of city code was intended really to protect the public from an errant projectile. Uh, as we're living in a confined space, a bunch of people in a community compared to the rural county area where there is not that prohibition, uh, just really to protect the public. This prohibition actually dates back to eighteen eighty-eight. I just went and looked up uh the ordinance. It was ordinance uh number twenty-five that was passed really one year after Moscow was incorporated as a town. At that point in time, it stated that any person or persons who shall discharge any firecracker or firearm within the corporate limits of the town of Moscow without having first obtained permission from the Board of Trustees of said town of Moscow shall be deemed guilty of misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof, before justice of the peace, shall be punished by fine not less than five dollars, no more than fifty dollars, together with costs. And in default to the payment of said fine and costs, he or they shall be imprisoned in the town jail for one day for every two dollars of fine or cost. Um, so that was a year after incorporation as a town. Uh, this section was also updated in nineteen eighty-four, and that's when some additional language was added uh to, to, and it actually, it must have been amended between then, but most recently updated nineteen eighty-four. And that code amendment included the specific language that this section shall include handguns, rifles, pellet guns, air rifles, BB guns, slingshots, flippers, bows, arrows, and other projectiles. So it broadened it. It was prior to nineteen eighty-four. It was just firearms. Um, the request for you this evening, Mr. King wishes to operate an indoor airsoft facility that would include both indoor shooting range as well as team play facilities. Um, if you're not familiar, airsoft weapons are similar to paintball guns, but, and BB guns, but they shoot a, a very lightweight plastic projectile. It's powered either by spring, air, or other electronic means. Um, Mr. King proposes an indoor facility would be located uh at one oh five Louder Avenue, which is an existing commercial building that's located within the motor business zoning districts. Um, you may recall it as the Furniture, Browns Furniture Center, a portion of that building. Um, and the staff review, the proposed use in our view does not appear to present any threat to the public that I think that section of code was intended to address. Section ten, three, four of Moscow City Code provides the council with the authority to grant exception to this prohibition in fixed localities and under fixed rules with a written permit containing any requirements the council may deem necessary. And that permit then remains subject to revocation anytime by action of the council. Uh, city staff have prepared resolution for the council's consideration to serve as that official permit and that exception approval. And to be happy to try to answer any questions that the council might ask.
I was just gonna add, I watched the recording of the um admin committee meeting and my questions were asked during that time. So um, I don't, as of right now, I don't have any new questions.
I have a question. So if we pass this today, this is just for this one business. So if this business were to change locations or be sold to a different owner, would we have to go through this process again?
So it would be for that location. Um, I think if you had a different owner that had the same use, I'd have to review. I think, you know, that permission, I think that exception in that fixed location would still apply. I don't think it's unique to the operator. I think it's, so long as it's operated in that location in the same nature and manner as the request was made, if you just change ownership, I don't think that would require council action to essentially transfer it. But it could not be moved to another location because it's specific to this individual property.
We couldn't pass a rule that would just exempt this kind of business across the city. It has to be business by business, right?
So, no, the, the council couldn't modify the code. Uh, you could modify the code to exclude airsoft, paintball, or other types of recreational, you know, tag-like devices that are used in an indoor setting. Uh, if you wanted to do that, certainly that, that could be a code amendment to amend this and not require an exception for that type of discharge of a projectile.
Well, sorry to bring it up at the last minute. Maybe that's something for the future, something to think about in the future. So we're not like constantly doing exceptions.
This is the first one I've seen in twenty-four years here.
I don't know, maybe it'll be a new thing.
Mr. Mayor, uh, that's a good point, Julia. I think I'm okay with it being case by case with it being zoned within motor business, like it makes sense for the use and the location. Um, but I'm also thinking, and actually, it was funny, I think Bryce pointed out in the administrative meeting that it's located by a busy intersection. It's also right across the street from the current location of the alternative high school. Um, and I think there, there are some valid concerns, but I also think um based on what we know and what the limitations are for, um, and part of it is the proximity to Moscow Police Department that I feel pretty comfortable that if something, if there were nefarious action, that we would um be able to address it. And I'm okay with it being a case by case exception because I don't, I, I think with it being airsoft, that may be different than us talking about um someone trying to buy a vacant lot and having it turn into a in a firing range like within city limits or something. So I'm okay with it being case by case. I'm also a, a I'd say enthusiastic, but I'm just like a passive trap shooter. So like, I, I, I appreciate the opportunity to have that like within city adjacent hobbies within city limits. But um uh, I, I don't have concerns and I, I wouldn't want to do a, a sweeping amendment to the code change. I think this tool is working exact, is exactly as intended and it's, I'm good with it being a case by case evaluation.
Well, it sounds like we've uh sort of drifted off into council deliberation. So any other questions per se? Well, don't run too far. Okay, council.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution granting an exception to Moscow City Code Section ten, three, four, second.
Hey, in the discussion, councilors. Okay. We vote. Sandra?
No.
Julia?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Bryce?
No.
Gina?
Aye.
Drew?
Yes.
Okay, four to two, uh, the resolution is approved. So that concludes the numbered part of the agenda. And now we move on to reports. Julia?
Um, well, this week, I'm gonna steal everybody's thunder because I think we were all there. But uh, we had the Pluse Basin Aquifer Committee uh Water Summit this week. And um, as always, it was very informative. I think uh, the the most informative part was unfortunately, the graph continues to look exactly the same every, every year. You know, yeah, I was hoping like, oh, maybe it'll change.
It's not worse.
It doesn't. Yeah, it's not worse. It's just very clear what the cycle is with the aquifer. So um, that it's continuing to decline. Um, so very informative. I really applaud the, the scholarship at that meeting and the um effort that P VAC goes to, to really um put out a lot of great information and make it open to the public. So um, yeah, that was it. Fair and Affordable Housing Commission is canceled for this month. So that's my other meeting and um nothing else terribly exciting.
Drew?
Uh, my uh updates are relatively short. Um, been a quiet uh two weeks, you know, the uh, um P VAC meeting. It's always good to hear what's happening. Um, tomorrow, we have um Farmer's Market um Commission. And so look forward to reporting that. It's an anxious, eager crowd that does a lot, as you can see. Um, I, and, and it was also a really successful market that we had this year. So congratulations to staff and uh, and that group for all the work that they've done and, you know, um gaining some recognition um state and nationally. Uh, and then, other than that, there's really not a lot of things. I've been meeting with a lot of uh eager citizens to talk about a myriad of issues that they find that are important. And um, so that's been um good. And uh, that, that's all for my updates.
Sandra?
Um, yep, P VAC was great. Love that they have it every year. And they have really great notebooks that I always get to take back with me. So I appreciate that, trying to be sustainable, right? So uh, yeah, that was um really nice. Uh, Winter Market has started up at the nineteen twelve center and they are giving tours of the third floor and by they, often it's me. So not always, but sometimes it's someone else, but it's often me on the third floor. Um, so if you wanna see what it looks like right now and what the plans are, um, come to Winter Market. And let's see, um, I can't remember where this fell in, so it may have happened more than two weeks ago, but um, I was grateful to have the chance to work with the League of Women Voters um to put the forum on. It was uh harder this year because of the cemetery board and the school board election and there were a lot of weird things happening in terms of scheduling. Um, so I hope it went smooth because it was really chaotic for those of us trying to put it on. And I got to give my last cemetery tour of the year. And so um, that was great. And that was from the Historical Society. So I'm excited that the holiday season is coming up. There are a lot of really fun things out there. Like I said, winter markets. I know there'll be the Victorian Christmas coming up soon. Um, Fun Things in the City Light at the Night Parade is coming up. This is a really great cold fun time of the year. So I'm excited for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, tomorrow's tree commission. Woo! I can't wait. Um, it is also your right and your responsibility to go vote tomorrow. Um, and, and this being the eve of the last uh night of our campaign twenty twenty-five, the extravaganza that it was. Um, I have to say it was very different. There were only two forums and I remember it being four or five times that in the past. Um, but I will say, um, following on your statement about the League of Women Voters and um the new St. Andrews Forum as well, very respectful, very hot. Both of them were just thermally challenging, I'm telling you. And there's no nice way to sweat. Just gonna throw that out there. But I thought the questions were respectful and I thought that um Lauren Potter Fins did a fabulous job. Fins Potter, Potter Fins. Lauren did a great job and, and as did the students. And they didn't look nearly as nervous as the rest of us were. So um, thank you, a couple candidates that are in the, the audience with us. It was a good, well-run, respectful campaign. So thank you for that. That's all I have, sir.
Nice. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, echo the same sentiments about P VAC Water Summit last week. I was, I think I told a couple of you this, I was a little disappointed that we didn't get the NOAA weather report. That's something that I look forward to and maybe it was a scheduling conflict or something, but we didn't get the, the weather forecasting for the winter, which I always kind of look forward to seeing their analytics and, and data on that. It's gonna be cold, dark gray weather. Yeah, got it. There's the weather report. Yeah, you're welcome. Uh, coming from a philosopher, that's literally how I describe the weather. On October twenty-first, uh, had Sustainable Environment Commission where Kyle Steele talked a little bit about water quality. We're gonna continue on that conversation uh next month. On Friday, October twenty-fourth, I attended the Leadership Breakfast hosted by the U of I. Um, and it was really well attended. I was surprised. Um, a couple of hundred faculty and staff, all from the University of Idaho and from the community, talking about the work that the University of Idaho has done and is doing. Uh, and just kind of continuing realizing and, and recognizing rather just the important relationship that U of I has to Moscow and Moscow has to U of I. And so it was, it was great to be in that room with all those folks. Uh, last week, admin committing. Um, and then after that, I went to the first, uh, to my first welcome table at the nineteen twelve center. And it was absolutely delightful. So if you are unfamiliar, the welcome table uh is an event that is put on uh at the end of every month at the nineteen twelve center. I forget, and you can Google Moscow Welcome Table and you get put in a lottery to get seats and it was full, but it just was, it was so charming and absolutely delightful and just made, made me so happy uh with, with regards to just the joy and just the connections within the community. It was, it was fantastic. Um, this week's Pretty Tang, which I'm looking forward to. And I wanna give one quick shout out to the Vandal Women's Basketball Team that started their season today. And they beat WSU. So by two points. So go Vandals. Uh, the men are currently playing right now at WSU. And as echoed by a couple of other uh councilors up here, please make a plan to go vote tomorrow. Um, get out there, tell your friends, tell your family, take them to the polls, buy them a cup of coffee afterwards. Get out there, tell your friends, tell your family, take them to the polls, buy them a cup of coffee afterwards. Just get out there. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
We'll shortstop on you.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to say on Sunday, I took some food to the Illinois's Westside Food Bank, and all the food banks are short, and so if you have extra money or food, please take it to your food bank of choice, because things are looking a little bleak.
Likewise, yeah.
Yeah. Now you, Haley.
I realize I should probably look ahead a little bit too. So I, on the 21st, I attended the P-Bac Communications Subcommittee Meeting. We just got an, an overview of what the team was gonna present at P-Bac, which was nice because I was barely functional all of last week with an unknown bug. So actually, I laughed at Bill's hand sanitizer, but like, the bugs, the germs aren't playing around this year. So I missed the P-Bac Water Summit, I'm mostly sad I didn't win a low-flow toilet in the raffle. Kidding. P-Bac does receive the NOAA forecast update, so when I see that on the agenda, I will make sure I flag it for everyone because they're open to the public's end, so I'm happy to flag that. Leadership Breakfast, great food, good company, it's all of the advisory boards for all of the colleges and entities, and they all travel, and it's, it's just, it's fun to be a vandal on that day, and I'm sure you're tired after that.
There was a guy at my table that had traveled from South Africa.
I love it, I love it.
Vandals are everywhere, it was cool, sorry to take you off.
No, I love it. And then I caught most of the Association of Idaho Cities Board Meeting, and Mayor can speak to some of it, that was last Monday. I'm revisiting the agenda. One of the things, they, we got an update on the America 250 Initiative, which I know there's been some conversations about. It just reiterates the fun, the funds that's available, that are available for communities to do things and stuff, to celebrate America's 250th birthday next year. Some of the proposals that, the nice thing is, since we had, AIC has like a full-time staff that works year-round, they are doing year-round planning and advocacy and kind of trying to look through what is still often a murky crystal ball about what may show up the next legislative session that will impact cities. And so things like the state insurance plans for municipalities, waste tire cleanups, rehiring retired law enforcement officers, and like hiring first-degree relations in smaller cities. We're all, yeah, nepotism laws that exist for good reason, but make it really challenging for very small cities, towns to do, to do their thing. So it was a very interesting and long conversation, and then I took some more Dayquil and signed off a little early. So, but that was on the 27th, and I went to my first Winter Market last Saturday because I was feeling a little more human to get some veggies, and that was the first time I had been on the third floor of the 1912 Center. So I think if anyone is interested and wants to understand what the community-funded and pursued solution for the third-floor space, and you haven't done it yet, would encourage it. And I'm just gonna plug the two upcoming events that will happen prior to our next meeting. Thank a Veteran on Veterans Day. I'm excited to attend the U of I Veterans Day Veterans Appreciation Dinner on campus. And then I want to make sure the Town and Gown is scheduled for the 13th. Is that right? Okay, it is the 13th, not the.
Thursday, the 13th.
Thursday, the 13th, so. And then other upcoming things, I've got a smart transit meeting on Wednesday. I'm gonna go to the ski swap on U of I campus for the outdoor program on Thursday, and try not to cry every time the sun sets at 4:30 for the next month. Finding pockets of sunshine where I can, but that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, as for me, to go on with the Association of Idaho Cities Board Meeting that occurred, discussed many of the things that Haley talked out. You Dayquilled too soon because things wrapped up pretty quickly after.
Correct.
All of the mayors and councilors from many of the cities in Idaho get involved in a room, and somebody starts talking, you know? It takes, you know, willful construction of sideboards to keep things moving forward. But yeah, looking forward to the legislative session. We have the legislative discussion coming up on December 2nd down in Boise, where we'll be looking into what the legislature seems to be gonna, well, do or do to us, whichever you want to phrase it as, for another year, so. The Water Summit was good, there was also good progress indicated for the study, the 10% study leading to an alternate water supply. So things are actually beginning to move slowly to determine a provision for alternate water, which we're gonna need sooner or later, hopefully a little bit later, but you don't know. Airport board met, and one of the chief discussions there is what the heck is going on with the concessions? So for that, it's looking like the airport is probably gonna seize control again and say, you, the concessionaire, are not cutting it, so off you go. So anyway, we'll figure out something for concessions there at the airport, which is badly needed for coffee and a donut or muffin early in the morning for that 5:30 flight. And just to echo everybody else's sentiment, tomorrow is Election Day, get out and vote.
Relocations. Relocations this year, too.
So consult the map, it's online, find out where it is that your polling station is, and don't make any whiny excuses about I overslept, or I forgot, or, you know, no, just go do it. Yep. Anything from staff? Nothing?
I move adjourned.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank.